All in favor, please stand for the vote.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the previous meeting. We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes, any additions or corrections? None all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Vote if you care. Approval of the bills.
I see that the circus player Mario is on there, I don't know if I'm gonna deal with that separately or on this list. Just bring that to your attention.
Well, that's sixteen nine, well.
Yep, from Mario.
I guess what are the wishes of Mario?
That... The price can...
Yep, that one, yep.
And we have it?
We have it, yeah.
I guess it's in the bills, I mean, that are printed, so I don't know, probably approve again in bulk.
Yeah, move, move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And we also have the second quarter mill levy for the Lake Creek District Health unit for fifty-three, five, forty-nine. Would you like to add that as a motion? Okay. And who made the second? Okay, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the bills. Questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Holson.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Anything interesting?
There's a few in the red, um, emergency management is quarterly money that hasn't come back yet. And shroud fees, that's just something that's always gonna be... ...ever take.
It looks like we're at what, seventeen percent budget, which should be a little twenty times. Okay, further discussion, questions?
I move to approve the financial report estimate.
A motion to approve the financials, we have a second. I have a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in... oh, see, roll call.
Holson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Treasurer's checks, move with them.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the treasurer's checks. Roll call there. Roll call.
Britt.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Holson.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to, uh, add, uh, request from the Firebird's Clay Target Team, uh, to the agenda of our new business.
Okay. Do you have a motion to put that out now? A motion in a second to add, uh, talking about the clay target team to the new business, uh, further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, okay, that's put on the agenda. Uh, and I just, uh, I don't know if you got this, Kevin, I forgot to bring it up to my desk, I just got it a couple days ago. It's talking about, uh, uh, the redo of Highway Two from, uh, Church's Ferry all the way into Devil's Lake. Looking for a comment from us? Okay.
I did talk to the district engineer, just told him that we have that little project, uh...
Okay.
So he's aware of it.
So you basically, you basically gave him the comment they're asking for, any concerns you have. Okay, I just forgot to bring it up, so we can discuss it if we have to. Okay, very good.
So unless you have, I just told him we have a project coming up, that's all I told him.
Okay. Yeah, as long as he knows we're just gonna do that, that, uh, median basis.
Thursday they have a, a meeting over at the city, it goes to you, maybe from five to seven or something like that.
I didn't see the time, but I knew it was Thursday.
Yeah, they were looking for comments, uh, forward to them by the twelfth, but as long as they, they're aware to talk to you, then we'll go. Okay. Okay, anything else for the agenda? Can see nothing, who would have a motion to approve this? So, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. Okay, Crystal, good morning.
Good morning. So, the main thing I have for today was the policy changes, recommendations for you guys to look forward and either give me what you would like to see or approve it. Um, that I would like to see something done with it by the second, 'cause we are having a harassment training and look for that trainer to be able to, you know, go over the policy with employees. So, um, the major changes are for this policy was the recording structure, the recording structure was to come to the board. Now it's more set up to come to the department head in an H R, instead of come directly to the board. So, that was the main reason for the changes in the policy and then, and then I went in and did some updating to it. Um, changed the policy name, um, updated the protective definition examples and then first the recording structure and then added an investigation scope, so an employee would know kind of what the investigation would look like. That was the main thing that were changed.
I just add, Crystal, I visited about it, you know, about who they're reporting to, who should talk to who and stuff like that. And it looked reasonable to me, uh, I thought it looked really good, actually. Uh, basically, you know, everything's gonna report, you know, department head and the human resources head and then if it is a department head, it'll go to the portfolio holder and the human resources.
We're here saying if the issue is with the department...
If the issue is with the department head, yes, say a, say a staff member has involved it with their department head or something, then it, yeah, then it'll go to the head of, uh, human resources as well as, and/or the portfolio holder. People have a problem with us, uh, one of the five commissioners, then it goes to the state's attorney. Right, bypasses everything. Yeah, I felt that though, at least in my mind, that was a reasonable way to do it.
Is that pretty standard as far as county structures go? I mean, I would imagine so, it sounds very, very standard and appropriate, but...
Yeah, when I was reviewing other county policies, that's kind of how their structure was up to.
Okay.
Well, I would move to adopt the changes.
Okay.
I have a second, though.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the changes to, let me get the policy name right, uh, the discrimination, harassment and bullying policy, which is number seven oh four in the employee. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, that was the only one correct, or is there one other one?
No, that was the only one at this time and then just for you guys to know that, um, on Monday, I found I'm doing some FLS day training with the, um, department heads and you guys are very welcome to join in on that if you'd like to. And what that kind of reviewing is, um, we should have employees classified, that, um, that overtime release, things like that, so we can do a review to make sure we have everybody correctly classified, so...
Okay, what day, what time of day?
Oh, that's at nine on Monday.
Nine on Monday, the...
Uh, then, is it at night?
Night, yes.
And it's another circle.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, anything else, uh, any more questions? Okay, thank you, Crystal.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a good day.
You too. You too. Stacy.
Good morning.
Morning.
The, uh, office is still busy, we had over ninety and then being I was gone three days out of the month for a conference in Bismarck. Couple of, uh, highlights of the conference, uh, issues that we're having troubles with the V A. Uh, basically, things are slowing down as far as getting things done and it won't get fixed. It's just that's the way it is. So, it's taking longer to get, uh, action done with the V A. And it's just due to backlog and the higher rate of claims being submitted, so, uh, it wasn't unexpected, we've seen it coming on for the last few months and, uh, it was explained by the, uh, heads of the V A at the conference, so it was, uh, not well received, but not much we're into about it, but, uh, other than that, everything's still going like clockwork.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Stacy? Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
Kevin.
Come on. Come on. First of all, Greg Close called me asking if he can haul every road, he used to doing our gravel projects for us this year and I told him I would bring it to the national, it's always been the night in the past, but he says his trucks are, uh, licensed to haul ninety-six thousand pounds legally and that he can claim over three dollars a yard, I don't know how he got his math, but that's how he, what he claimed. Our bid spec does not say that they gotta stay within our, our eighty thousand pound limits, but it's kind of been given over the years. All of our roads are rated at eighty thousand pounds right now. Except for like the woods rotten and, you know, a few here and there. He would be driving on the eighty thousand pound roads, by the way.
How many, uh, how many yards of gravel are you gonna be using this summer?
About fifty-four hundred, two projects each are thirty-seven hundred.
So sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars in savings if the three dollars holes to do additional weight on the road. Plus then we'd have to change the bid spec because it would be a competitive advantage to him knowing that he could haul ninety-six thousand and the other guys wouldn't do that.
I would have to send out some kind of, and they're doing the six, so...
He also called me and explained to me that he had the tires and the axles to go, like Kevin says, to carry the ninety-six thousand. And he explained it to me, I thought quite simple, instead of putting three dunks with his payloader in there, which is, uh, thirty yards.
Thirty?
And, um, he can only put two if he runs eighteen thousand. And it would be substantial savings to the county on the ability to haul more, he could save the county money, so...
In the past, he's been charged almost for twenty-five yards, so...
Oh...
He's probably put two and a half dunks, but anyway, that's looking for...
Dry axle grain traders are legal at ninety-two thousand, right?
And you could be right, ninety-two, I put ninety-six, but...
Ninety, I think he's got four axles on his trailer. Or three on the tractor, three on the truck, or on the trailer, yeah.
Yeah, three and three and then one...
He's got the look that looks like...
Seven, he's got seven, yeah.
Just be single.
He's got seven axles, he's legal on it, no question.
Yep, I didn't read that part.
So I don't see if there's gonna be any damage to the road. And like he also said, he said, "As long as I'm not doing it on a ninety-five degree date." And I could see that would really tear up an asphalt road if you're running heavy on a ninety-five degree date.
Right.
So... Because I, I would be more concerned of not doing that than running it this way. Because he has the axle to haul it. I know we have grain trucks on the, on our county roads that are running this heavy, I know that.
They're not supposed to be, but they are.
Well, like I say, if three axle trailers, they could still run that in two to be legal.
They don't have to have three on their tractor, though.
No.
Yeah, unless they're like seventy feet long, then they could do it. They can't get the length generally.
Yeah, you got, the sheriff looks like he wants to say something.
I'm thinking. We're in number one.
But my only concern is that if we make an exception, exception for, for Greg, then everyone's gonna want the exception then at that point and then we're gonna be opening up, do we want everybody hauling ninety thousand plus? But, you know, I mean, I know they're legal, but, you know, it's all comes down to road base and everything like that and we've, we've set the standard at eighty for a reason, you know?
So in the past, when this was requested, you said it was denied?
It's always been denied as long as I've been here.
And what, what's the rationale for that? Is it basically what Adam is saying, that, you know, we have, we have limits placed for a reason and that, you know?
Right. I think a lot of the discussion in the past is if they have to come down a township road or maybe cross a bridge or something like that, that was more of a concern than anything. In this case, they won't have to, but...
You don't think we want to do it then, Kevin, huh?
I think we, something we can look at next year, but I think it's not gonna be fair for the rest of the vendors.
You've already gotten bids.
I haven't, I haven't got any bids yet.
But we already put specs out for the year.
Right.
Okay, yes, and then we have to change the specs and tell everyone to take it all like that and...
Right.
What roads are we doing again?
Uh, four north of seven, so that'd be like north of Rocket. And then six, uh, east of Salton.
All the way to Nelson County line?
Yep. Each one is six miles.
What's Nelson County do over there at the end of that road?
There's still eighty thousand.
There's still eighty thousand, that gravel road.
Yep. Only if you like in the potato country, uh, Grand Forks, Walsh, they're higher. And then they have to sign them that way also. I do know that Benson is talking about it, they have a gun shop raising all their, all their road stuff, whatever they're raising to, I don't know what they're gonna raise it to.
Whatever they leave on a state highway, are they legal on there, is that, is that right?
Um, basically, basically, yes, but there might be a one state highway somewhere that doesn't meet it. But yeah, basically.
Well, say, if we wanted to do something like that, how would we go about determining if, like, the road bed on three is capable of hauling that, you know, so we know we're making the right decision? Is there a way you can check that?
Yep, I mean, it takes the, the engineering firm to do it, they go out there with a it's, it looks like a giant thumper that thumps the road to see how solid it is. And then go bypass the, how much materials are already, that type of thing. But that's, I mean, that's a cost.
Yeah. I just would wanna have some kind of an idea instead of just shooting in the dark if we wanted to go through something like that.
Yeah, we should... We can tell the cost to do, like...
We did it about twenty years ago and it was about, of course, that's a long time ago, but about the five or six thousand dollars.
Okay.
So I would guess ten to twelve, maybe?
Did it give you a good idea?
Yeah, it would give you a great idea, yeah.
I think it might be a reasonable thing to do that next year, just so we can get an idea of what condition our roads are in and what, what we can handle and...
I would definitely give it a good idea, I think, it's not about shooting from the head.
And, and then in addition to that, you know, having a, having a set standard of if you need a waiver, here's how you go about getting one, right? Rather than just the county commission saying, "Yep, I guess so." And then we, then we're not worried about that either, but I agree that we should do that, too.
I think it's just good to know, 'cause, you know, it, we've been putting overlays on everything and may, maybe that would make, you know, a little bit more strength and things like that, you know?
Twenty, twenty years ago, we did it to prioritize which road was in worse shape, which road was in the best shape, so we worked on the worst ones first, so it was beneficial that way, too.
You did a good idea to do that.
I think we'd be, we should talk about that at budget time, but
Yeah.
I don't know what everybody else's intent is, but I, I guess my, my thought was since we already put spec out and everything for this year, to not have to rebid everything, that, that would be my main concern at this point.
That was our foundation, it's something we can certainly look at next year.
Is it hard to line that equipment up to do it?
Uh, you mean like the tri- triple axle trailer?
Or whatever, the thumper testing?
Oh, they have one, I don't, I would have to ask them, I guess.
Who does?
ALJ has got it.
Okay, okay.
They did it the last time.
Should check, would you have it in your budget?
I can look, I'll look.
That would be something for us to use, you know, we can't do it in winter time, you gotta do it...
Right, I'll visit with them and see what it costs and then look at my budget.
Okay.
It is very beneficial, 'cause it tells you, it tells me which roads are in worse shape, which ones have the most cracks on them or whatever, I mean, it's pretty thorough.
That'd be worth while.
It would help us determine on a rotating basis which one would be fixed.
Right, that's how we originally set up our five-year road plan, same one.
It's a good principle.
Be good idea if I know we did things right then, you know, if the right roads got fixed, I guess, how do we know?
Okay. What would be intensive, commission on now, what we're discussing now? Kind of going all the way, basically, that's what we're...
Do you'd like a motion on this, Kevin?
Only if you wanna do it, otherwise I'll just tell them that we decided not to. If you decide to let them do it, then I'd like to move.
I guess for now, I'd like to, uh, hold off on it.
Like the four, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, sounds like that's the consensus. Okay. That's what we'll do then, we'll, we'll check it for working out at this summer and see maybe we can get it for next year and that.
Yeah, and that's why I'll tell Greg to do the exact same thing.
Okay, sounds good.
And just so you know, those bid openings will be on the fur and gravel projects and chip seal projects are done the sixth of April in here, so I don't know if anybody wants to be here, that's an option, but...
What time's that at?
Eleven o'clock in the morning. Take about a half hour, it's quite a few bids.
You expect quite a few bids.
Yep.
They seem to be hungry, huh?
Yep, yep.
That's a good thing.
Everybody's looking for work, yeah. And, uh, Crystal and I are going to H R conference, I don't know if I'll be at the commission meeting, so I'll just give you guys the results and my recommendation and you can act on my recommendation or however you wanna do it, but I will give you that right before the meeting.
Okay.
Come back after one, just for me, you're gonna let Mr. Close know?
Yes, I will, yes, today.
Okay.
And then the third one is our summer maintenance contracts, I have on there for a motion for the chairman, but it shouldn't say the chairman and the auditor, the auditor signs those contracts also.
Okay. Okay.
For summer maintenance contract, today.
Should I name the townships off, or is it okay if we just...
Have any of them changed at all?
No.
Which is that we add some that probably aren't in yet, right?
We've probably added some that aren't on the list.
Okay.
The only ones we don't have, might be easier to say, is dry lake, freshwater, overland and proper road.
So those are four we're missing?
Four.
Okay, so we have thirty-two other ones that are back now. So then, I'll entertain a motion to sign the thirty-two contracts.
There's no question, there's no problem with these other four, you said?
No, they're just a little, like, that's typical every year and things like that.
All in, okay. We have a motion in a second to sign the contracts that we have, uh, for summer maintenance with the townships. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Getting the last thing on April thirteenth, another Friday, Friday the thirteenth, our similar store related project, uh, for the paving, I was gonna wait for you, it's being bid out in Bismarck. So just to hand out the results on that at the next meeting also. Before you guys act on. And they'll just be looking for us to accept a little bid.
Okay.
Talia?
Right, any questions for Kevin? Very good, thanks, Kevin, thank you. Okay. On to new business, letter of transfer. Move forward.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve a letter of transfer, further second. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Letter from the U S Department of the Interior. This is, this is just telling us they're gonna be doing some water damage, you know, or something to that effect.
I think it has something to do with that line going up the, the line in the outward economy.
Yeah.
And it says they're adding two hundred users, so they must be giving us a heads up, 'cause a few must be being put on gravel.
Doctor Collins, doctor, our regional water district? Doctor Collins, yeah.
And so...
Yeah, there's...
I think they're getting the water from our city double plate.
There's a few lines up and, or they're asking for it on the road map, so...
Do you want us to do? Or what?
I think we're in need...
I think, yeah, if we have concerns or comments, we can send them to this area manager. I don't have any concerns, though, that'll be good water.
Is this end of the ball in? I think it's just a ball in, I think.
I think so.
It's down to Abid, huh?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody wanna act on that, or is basically reviewed and so, is that gonna approve it?
No.
Right, just for information, basically. Okay, excuse me. Uh, agreement for engineering services for the L E C security system upgrade project.
Hey, we're moving forward out to law enforcement center with the cameras and the intercom systems. Uh, we had this great engineering firm, mine out at our meeting on the twenty-first of March and this is the focal twenty-five seven, I think it's bigger, twenty-five thousand seven hundred. And the city and Abid County are gonna split this project, uh, preliminary. I only made up one whole agreement here before, or commission, but I guess that's what this is about. We expected the project, as far as the engineer, give us a rough estimate of five hundred and fifty dollars. Camera system. Like his, his bill will be twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. Law enforcement center worried about they have to commission, or will send permission or drawings to make the motion at second at that meeting to move forward with this. And they put their blessing on it, but...
Does the engineer already got the word?
No.
No, okay.
This is disciplinary cost, and he's the same engineer that did the work at Sweetwater School.
So just to make sure I heard you right, right now we're discussing twenty-five thousand seven hundred of a five hundred thousand dollar project, is that right?
Cleaned it off the plan for what we need in the mail, I think. Submit bids are all advertised for bids, so...
Yeah, it looks like the, yeah, basically the whole project, he's gonna basically do all the work on designing and then actually act as the general, basically, to run the whole project. My, my only question was, in reading the contract, was, it's a, it's, maybe I'm just confused, it's got a lump sum payment of that twenty-five seven, but then earlier in the contract, it says they're going to bill hourly. So does that mean that's like just the baseline contract number, then a little bit additional bills?
This is a projected cost of the engineering firm, twenty-five seven. Bill, bill's at invoices.
So, two oh one, maybe I just read it wrong, 'cause it was late last morning, I read.
Terry's at it, so...
Okay.
He's got the section that he paid you referencing.
Okay, yeah, he does have that referenced, okay.
So that's basically what he's thinking, it's gonna be the overall cost and then he'll invoice it since the work is done.
Okay, yeah, I was confused by our last thing, it was really a hundred, even, so... Okay, so, and that's, on a five hundred thousand dollar project, five percent engineering cost is, I think, very reasonable.
Sure. And so, just to clarify and make sure I understand as well, uh, the city is offering to split the total cost of the project, so the five hundred thousand versus just the twenty-five?
Okay. Yeah, 'cause...
Five fifty preliminary figure, that's what engineers do, so...
Yeah, and the J, the J P A on the jail says states were fifty-fifty owners on it.
Yep.
So any upgrade like that is gonna be a fifty-fifty cost.
I don't, like, we've talked about before, I don't feel as though you need to bring the other counties into that agreement. You gotta tell them where you're gonna put... I don't think there's any interest on their part, so... See, we've talked about to the sheriff, how we did the, uh, how to move forward into the financing of it. Everybody's kinda wondering how we're gonna do that. The search and rescue, we borrowed money from a local bank, advertised for rates. And got a very favorable rate from the union bank when we financed the search and rescue building. And we run that through the sheriffs.
Budget.
When we budgeted. And we're on, two payments left, three?
I think there's three.
Three, yeah.
Yeah. They're like eighty-two thousand a year, eighty, eighty to eighty-two.
It was a five-year contract, I believe.
Yeah, and we budgeted for that, and I thought it worked very well, I was thinking we'd do the same thing with this project.
What interest rate did you get on that project?
One, 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 you know.
Yes, so I would assume we're gonna get, it's gonna be a higher rate now, obviously.
Sure.
Still should be.
But well below prime?
Yeah, I would. Yeah, and I think we had, what, four bids, four, uh, you know, basically, I was at the top last time, and they were all very, very good bids, all of them.
And you can push your brow or commission Olson, but they did check in the money from the bank in North Dakota, and that was not a, a very strong option at all.
But what's.
In fact, even if the funding was available.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe it was, I mean, it wasn't even guaranteed that we could borrow it from them. So, I mean, that was another reason why we're looking at staying, it'd be easier to stay local, because the city had mentioned at that meeting, we had the possibility of some bank, bank in North Dakota money, and that wasn't available either.
So it's, it, just because the project doesn't really match the scope of what they're like.
Well, I think they're on money.
They're on money.
Oh, they're on money for the, for the pool's gone.
I think there's another cycle going on, but it might not be a plan for this project.
Well, yeah, they, they aren't gonna be replenished until next session. The next session, so it'd be probably June eight, nineteen, they'd get more money.
So I guess, I guess like that was the only thing we had, we had some other options.
Okay.
And to back up a little bit, with this engineering firm and the, and having this contract with him to design it, myself and Jim Shanks contacted four vendors. They will not proceed with their project until we have an engineering firm design the project. So we're kinda stuck with having him do it.
We can't spend public money.
Well, we, we don't have a choice, these, these other people will not engineer it.
Yeah, they're the installs.
So we have to have this engineering done before they'll even bid out a, put out a bid, so I mean, that's kinda, we have to have it, kind of thing.
Wouldn't be a good idea for us to spend public money without having an engineer.
No, and I, I'd like to see the complexity of that building and the bigger issues.
No.
Well, we need somebody with better experience to do it.
Oh, and like, like I said, I don't think it's unreasonable to hire an engineering firm at four or five percent of total cost of project that's projected, I mean, that's, that's a pretty reasonable feat to make sure we're doing it right.
I think that's a kind of a lost anyway, for that is hard to do.
Yeah, got it.
Like I told Kerry to start the meeting, I didn't recommend this engineering firm. I didn't realize who it was until we sat down. And I heard Perry engineering on my, I remembered that.
And this engineering firm has also done most of the re-bans of all the other jails in North Dakota.
Yeah.
Uh, the County Ward, Mackenzie County, uh, I forgot, uh, Millstones, they did, uh, some, something in Ward. I mean, they, they have been well, well spoken up by all the different, all the candies that we contacted to find out who did their engineering, who did their installs, who did, find out who did the new, and this engineering firm was involved in almost, almost every one of them.
Is more.
And they're very effective.
Is most of the security enhancements that they're looking at doing the all original part of the original building?
Uh, I, I, I don't understand what you're asking.
Well, you know.
Yeah, it's just in the.
Well, it's in, it's in all, it's in the.
The whole bit, yeah.
It's in the entire build, the new part, the old part, all, all of everything, it has to be re-upgraded, so antiquated.
There is nothing.
There's very limited.
There's some cameras that are.
There's no secret, there is nothing out there. See, old walks around and looks, that's what happens.
Oh, there's a few.
But, but that's important for people to understand, is that, you, you know, the modern technology that has come about with the security enhancements, it, the building doesn't have it.
No, we're back in analog, we're back in analog cameras, analog monitors, and all, and it's really antiquated.
Yeah, I think, can't remember, I think you told me that we're the only, one of the only jails, or the only jail in the state that doesn't have an intercom system.
Correct.
Uh, there's a couple of them, I don't use any names.
No, but they're probably older system.
But they're way older jails.
I think one of the key words Jeff used was modernization, you know, let's get into modernization.
And, and we did ask the engineer of the system that he's building, what the, what the lifespan of that system would be, so we're not buying something that's gonna be out of technology in five years or ten years, he said, there's stuff that's been there, that they put in ten years ago, that's still completely viable today, that's fun and play. So the system he's designing at should live well into the next twenty, thirty years, is that what we're talking about?
And like Jeff was there the other, on the twenty-first, and we had the state inspectors there. They didn't demand that we do this, but they strongly encouraged it. It's definitely gonna take a lot of liability off the county and the city.
Well, it's safety for your officers, it's safety for your inmates, it's safety for everybody that's anywhere back there, and, and it's, it's a liability, so you, exactly, it's, you know, now you have documentation that you can prove what happened or what's going on. So not only for inmates, but also for the officers as well, so.
Yeah, I, I, I look at it on a two-fold way, yeah, it's a liability issue, because you know, something happens in one of those cells, you don't have an intercom system, you don't make a check for fifteen minutes or something, fifteen minutes is a long time when somebody's having a health emergency or something like that. It's, it's just a better practice to make sure that if somebody does have a health emergency, or something happens back there, a fight or something, we're on top of it right away to make sure that it's stopped or.
Well, you know, for example, happened last week, guy tried to hang himself with a sheet. Luckily, they got there in time, they, they just, and they prevented it from even occurring, but he had, you know, he was ready to go. Prevented it, no injury, no loss, no, no anything. But had it not been at that particular moment, you know, you know, we got an issue with our safety where inmates. So, that, that goes along with the little button, the, the notification buttons as well as the cameras. It kind of ties it together, you know.
And Jeff has a comment on all the meeting on the twenty-first, he, he mentioned a little bit to me earlier.
Oh, I, I thought it went extremely well, I was very impressed with the, the report that, uh, the inspectors had given. Uh, they had nothing but praise for, for the facility, for the staff, for Rob, for Steve, for Jim Shanks, for Dr. Downs and her medical staff. You know, the, the building has made great strides, and the facility and, and the administration has made great strides in, in meeting the requirements, meeting the demands that Department of Corrections added. And really, you guys should all be commended for the work that's been done. Um, you know, like they had mentioned at the meeting, you know, these problems didn't arise yesterday. Um, so they realize that they're not gonna be fixed overnight either. But, uh, the progress that has been made in the facility has been, uh, very strong, and they're, they were very pleased with the, the progress that's been going on, so it's really good to hear. You know, not hearing it, you know, from either from Steve or from Rob Johnson, we're hearing it from the Department of Corrections, people that are doing the inspections, so it was, it was a very positive meeting I thought, and, you know, I'm very, very pleased that, uh, I was able to make it, and, you know, the results that, that they had for us, and, you know, so. So everybody within that facility needs to be commended, Steve, yourself, and Rob, and, and Dr. Downs, and her staff, and, uh, and the correctional officers in the back, and so, thank you for that. You know, progress is being made, and I think this will just enhance the progress that's already in place, and it'd be a good addition to the building.
Do I have time for a quick update, just a little bit, you know? But you remember back in September, we were complying with what, forty-two of one hundred and eight standards? As of the meeting when they were there, we complied with all, but we were six that we were not complying with, out of a hundred and eight. After that afternoon, we were down to two. We have two left to go to maintain a hundred percent compliance with the, with the jail rules. Which are gonna take some time because of policy things, and there's things that have to get put in, so it's gonna take us a couple weeks, maybe a month, and then we should be one hundred percent compliant. At which point in time, we're hoping that they'll lift that, uh, order they have against us, which they have said they're ready to do, because we have made good strides, so they're, uh, being very helpful and very, you know, accommodating to getting us on the right track, and we're disciplined. Uh, in a matter of what, six months, seven months, we've, uh, I think we've made, but, yes, we've made great strides. Uh, and it's nice to hear from somebody else, from just the three of us that are involved in it, so. Anyway.
And I think moving, moving forward with, with something like this shows the community's support on that facility as well, that, you know, as a commission, we're committed to and making the recommended necessary upgrades to the facility structural wise. So I, I guess if Kerry doesn't have any issues with this.
I don't have any issues.
Not that good. I would go ahead and make the motion that we accept this engineering proposal.
I'd second, uh, but I do have just one quick question functionally about what we're doing. Um, so, we're gonna install an intercom and a camera system, is it audio visual, so in other words, can, you know, you, I know you can intercom into the cell, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Does, does the inmate have the ability to communicate with the, the control hub if there was something that they felt that they needed to share?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They, they got at least alert, so they can come back, yes, there's a management, certainly, they need something, uh, whatever it may be.
Okay, kinda like a, a hospital.
Sure. But it's also, it's also an emergency alert, but they can also communicate to a point with the, with the, with the, the front desk, or the, the main desk in the correctional facility. It should be the options in the building.
Sure, I, I mean, I think that that'll reduce your workload tremendously if you have the ability to, to do a lot of that without sending somebody shuffling through the whole facility to get to where they need to, to just.
Correct, to, to, I need an extra sheet, or I need a pencil, or I need a phone call, or I need a, you know, they're kinda getting worked on now, that's been a while since I'm back. But, yeah, it's, and it's also, like I said, well, that's one of the, we're not talking about it yet, but it's one of the requirements of getting the, the, any, any option to have any of the federal prisons back. Right, they will not come back here until there's an intercom system, we have. So we're complying with that as well. But that's not the reason, we need this for what we have, we don't need it just for that. But that's the added bonus, if even if we do this, we do have a chance to get some federal dollars back into the facility to help us with some finance, and, yeah, at some point, uh.
I mean, I, I, I think it's a great idea, I just, just was curious.
Yeah, no, it's, it's meant to be, it's not, it's not gonna be an argument, but they should be able to contact the front desk with a, a request, yes.
Yeah, and I guess what it comes down to is, we're in the business, we're gonna have to run a jail, so if there's a jail, we gotta keep the facility up to date, we have to make it modern, so it's, you know, the other option is, is, you know, start calling prisoners, although we got you here, and we're not doing that.
People don't want us to do that.
No, you're gonna buy a bunch of people, a bunch of buses.
We need to run the jail, and we need to run it well, and this is just a step in that direction. Uh, where, where's the one you're gonna come from, I guess would be my only question.
What do you have the budget for?
You're gonna pull it out of the.
Only the twenty-five?
Yeah, just that half of the twenty-five.
Uh, what do you have in your budget, Steve?
Well, I'm.
Just, just so we can make a part of the motion, so we know.
I'm worried about mines, since I have a deputy, I'm just gonna find the stuff that I forgot to put on the budget. Um, you know, last year, I was, what, thirty thousand dollars, uh, you know, extra.
Well, since it's an LEC cost, can we pull it out of the LEC budget? And then at the end of the year, if we have to adjust accordingly, we can.
That would work.
I think that's reasonable.
I would just say keep it within the, like, the LEC budget line.
Yeah, just that one point two million.
Whatever we need to transfer money on with the general at the end of the year.
Because we're gonna be pulling from the general anyway to fund it, so, all right, you clean it that way, okay. Is that okay if we add that to the motion that we're pulling from the LEC?
Sure, my.
You made the motion, you made the motion, you made the second.
I did, and I, I accept that, yeah.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, since we're spending money, I'll roll call, please.
Brown?
Hi.
Wilson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike, huh?
Aye. Motion carries. And they have a lot for the center board, thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, keep going, Paul.
Good. Okay. Uh, clay target team from the high school, will you jump take that?
Well, I'll, uh, I'll take off my commission hat and put on my head coaching hat. Uh, I'm the head coach of the Hills Lake Firebirds Clay Target Team, and a year ago, we had bought a simulator, um, that the kids are able to use indoors, um, since we have such a short season. And, you know, what it is, is it's a, an electronic simulator, um, much better than the old Duck Hunter game that you use. But you're able to utilize the shotgun that you use on the, on the range itself, and it has a, a little light mechanism that fits into the barrel snugly, and then goes to a trigger mechanism that you wire onto the trigger. And then it's, uh, use a, a projector and a screen, and then on the screen, you have a foam, uh, uh, trap house, so it, it actually looks, you, you can, when, when you get it set up properly in a room, it looks exactly like a uh, clay target coming out of the trap house. And then you put the, the five stations around, so the kids can come and, they all are pulled, and the thing comes out of the, the trap house, and they shoot it like they would on a outside range, but it's just through laser lights and, and, uh, and then the computer keeps score of, of all they do. But it's, it's located down in the basement of the memorial building, because we bought it in conjunction with the four H program, the shotgun program. Through four H, uh, they purchased the computer, uh, uh, Firebirds purchased the simulator system. Um, and, and so, part of extensions, four H's money, is that they need to keep it within the building. So, taking it to another location isn't a real, uh, good possibility, at least in the short term. But in the short term, what I'm asking is for the permission to move the simulator from the basement of the memorial building to the basement of the courthouse, use it in the evening hours with the kids, and, uh, because the lift going downstairs to the memorial building is. And so, as her head coach, I can't get down there and supervise and watch what they're doing and how they're doing it, and, and we do have other coaches that have been doing it. But, uh, it puts me at a, at a disadvantage. And something that I'd like to be able to do, and especially with the cold weather that we've been experiencing, I don't know how soon we're gonna be able to get out to the range to actually have practice, practice, first night of practice was supposed to be tonight. Um, and we still have snow within our trap houses out at the range. And without any, uh, temperatures above freezing, that's not gonna change anytime soon. So what I'd like is your permission to have the kids, uh, be able to come down here after hours and, uh, bring their shotguns with them. All the shotguns, it, it's a mandatory that they're unloaded, no ammunition is ever brought into the building. Um, and that they, uh, we check them as they come in. And, and in order for them to be a part of the, the clay target league, is that they have to be at least a sixth grader, have to have gone through the hunter's safety cer- certification. And, um, the kind of thing, and then all the coaches are, have gone through some sort of certification program too, as, as far as working with kids, working with firearms, all the safety requirements that are, the league is, uh, requires of us coaches, so. What I would like is your blessing to bring the simulator down for a short period of time this spring, to handle all the kids to practice indoors and work with Candy's office to see who in, meeting room would be available.
You're looking at Kerry, she's.
I of course don't have a problem with it, but I have a few questions. Um, someone will be checking the weapons when they come in, and then when they're leaving, there's a check so that they're all taken out of the building.
They're all, all taken out of the building as well, right.
Okay, and then you're, you're the coach, and then whoever is assisting you have all had training in handling those types of firearms.
Well, I was considering, maybe schedule this, when there's nothing else going on in the basement, I mean, in your room also.
Right, that, that would be something, yeah. This is something I wanna check with to make sure that there's nothing else going on in the building, so.
This is in the evening?
Yep.
And then, my general question, because I'm a little ignorant on shooting simulation, and maybe Steve can weigh in. Um, what type of, you bring a shotgun down, so then what's coming out of the shotgun towards this, nothing?
I can, it's, it's a light on the end, it's a light target.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah. So there, there's no.
No conceivable.
No projectile coming out, and no ammunition is brought for him, and, kind of thing, so.
I guess I would put some question I have is, you know, whatever time you set this up, that young, young person is carrying a weapon, are they being escorted by their parent? And then they're turned over to the coach, so now they have some adult supervision, since they are under age? That's a liability thing for the county? So, go ahead.
Yeah, nor- normally, they're, um, escorted in with their parents, um, all the weapons are cased.
Yeah, that's the next question.
Yeah, as they come in and, or leave, you know, they're in a case, um, they're checked when they do. Yeah, as they come in and, or leave, you know, they're in a case, um, they're checked when they do come in. And then we have to, we have to physically set them up, you know, with the, the thing on the end of the barrel. And the, it has a, from the end of the barrel, it has a wire mechanism that go down with the trigger.
Yeah.
And if it's up, it's up.
I would just get them from there to make sure we have, since they're underage, I don't want that.
Yeah.
The first question is only, my kid, they just run up here, and you don't know. The adult has to bring them in, turn them over to a, a coach, an adult coach, and then they're, they're still supervised, and that would be the only concern I have.
We were doing the same thing in the basement.
We're doing it in the memorial building.
We're, we're doing it over in the memorial building now.
So they're broken in.
So they're broken in, they're, uh, we've been doing it for, you know, over a year.
But, the courthouse doesn't have the requirement that there are no weapons allowed.
Right.
That's the difference between the memorial building and the courthouse.
Right.
We can make exceptions?
You can make an exception to that, yes, you can, absolutely, but I'm just, that's the reason that we need to do this.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, the second, further discussion or questions?
Well, the, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
It's very rewarding.
I bet it is, huh? It's the young.
And then we have a, we have a very, very competitive team, you know, where there's forty young kids from the ages of sixth grade through seniors, and, you know, last year we took third in the state, over, you know, there's nine hundred competitors in the state, and we did very well, we had, uh, ten within the top one hundred uh, season averages, uh, we took second the year before and first, the first year of the, the league, um, even though there was only four teams at the time. Um, but now there's fifty teams and almost fifteen hundred students in the state participating in it statewide, so.
Were you using one door over there, through the yard, or you used one door?
I, I, I think I'd just have them come through the north door would be the, probably the best.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, as long as they've got parents dropping them off and picking them up, I mean, the, the last thing that I could imagine, cause it wasn't that long ago that I was in high school and picking dumb stuff, was, "Hey, I got this new shotgun, let me show you how you load it," and all of a sudden you got a round going off right outside, you know, door.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
That, that's, that's my only concern.
One of the things that we've noticed with the kids is that, no matter how goofy they are, once they get to the range, it's all business, and that, that's something that as coaches, we really require, you know, because there's no second chances. You have a, a mistake where we have to talk to you, and you're going home, and the parents will be notified if you're not there already of the infraction that you, you had at the range, and the second time you're off the team, you can't come back. So, there, there's no, with the firearms and the whole thing, there's no, no screwing around, and the kids understand that, they're, they're extremely respectful of it, they, they come, they bring their weapons out of the, out of their vehicle, they take them out of the case, you take them and put them in, you place them in the rack. The breach is always open, the chamber's always exposed, so you know that they're not loaded, uh, they know how to carry them, you know, point it down, point it up, whatever we require. And it's different at every range, so, um, but we do, um, make sure that, that somebody is, and the league requires that we have not just safe, or, uh, coaches out there, but we have range safety officers that have gone through training that, you know, make sure that the kids are behaving while the coaches are dealing with the kids up on the line. The other kids behind us aren't misbehaving and, and misusing their firearms, so. You know, it, it's a very well-oiled machine, and, uh, but they've been doing it for a number of years in Minnesota, you know, they have twenty thousand kids almost that uh, participate over in Minnesota, and, uh, you know, fired over two million rounds of, of ammunition and zero incidents of injuries or, or, uh, um, other violations that they care to report anyway, but, you know, we have, we haven't had any either with, uh, kids at school. You know, they know that they have their, and their weapons out of their vehicle and the shells and all that kind of thing before they go to school the next day. And, and so it's, you know, the kids have been, uh, very responsible in that aspect as well, so, it's been, been good, so.
We have a motion, the second. I, my other question is, how, how long do we think we're gonna, until we get the lift fixed over there?
Well, and that, that's just it, you know, it'll, and, yeah, it'll probably only be a couple more weeks, you know, before the weather turns nice enough where we can stay at the range.
Okay.
And, by, and then next fall sometime, you know, when we get back in there, and, you know, maybe the, the lift will be fixed, or, or we'll find a different location, you know.
Practice, what, a couple times a week?
Yeah.
So probably two or four times, maybe, and then go.
Would you, you willing to let us know when you guys are out on the range for the rest of the year?
Yeah.
Just so that, in case we're asked, we're not saying that it's still going on, it's not.
And if you guys ever wanna come down and, and witness, uh, the, all the simulator works, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Sure. Can we use it?
Yeah.
Don't kick her.
No, not at all, you know, and that's the only, only thing that we, you know, cause there is that recoil and that flinching motion, you know. Especially with those new shoot, those new kids, and they're, you know, they get in at a, at a simulator, and there's no big noise, there's no big bang, and there's no recoil to it, and they get out in the range, and it's different, so.
Doesn't take quarters, actually.
No quarters required.
What did the, uh, the software and, uh, computing everybody ask?
Uh, and the, the software was about three thousand dollars, and then our computer, we got pretty cheap for about five hundred, you know, once we're all set and done with it. It doesn't take a big, real big computer to run it, um, and it's the software that, you know, it's very proprietary software, and there's a lot of algorithms that go along with it, you know, to make sure that that thing is flying at the right trajectory and, and, uh, you know, right, simulated speed, because you're obviously not sixteen yards back, like you would be at a regular trap range. It, it, you know, you put in the dimensions of the room, and it'll tell you where to put the, the foot pegs, you know, so you're standing at the right location to make sure that your, and your viewpoint is really simulated to the sixteen yard trap house. So it's really, you know, the, the thought process that I've gone through with the software is really quite amazing.
What night do you do it?
Uh, we'll probably do it Tuesdays and, and Thursdays, uh, if that works out. Um, otherwise, we'll probably have to come in on maybe a weekend or something like that, but.
What, uh, what time do you start at ten, like?
Um, five thirty, six o'clock.
Do it with specators?
Absolutely.
Somebody's gotta be there.
I don't even bring my gun and borrow somebody?
You can borrow somebody's, you know, but, but there, there's a, a lot of measurements that go in, you know, we have to measure the kids' height, from their eye to the floor, um, their, their arm length, their barrel length, different things like that, so it, it's put into the computer, and.
It's incredible, I, I actually had, and it's, I feel comfortable enough talking about it now, cause I'm fairly certain it's not gonna go forward, but I had somebody approach me to do golf simulators and, and potentially a shooting range simulator in the, in the Holden Reese's building.
Yeah.
You know, and they were talking about that, and, and, uh, I'm amazed, you know, with the, with the VR headset too. Uh, I think, I think that there's a, that there's a, a market to be made for that, because if you've got a big open room, one of the things I think is interesting, you can do art. As long as you're wearing VR goggles, you can, you can paint three D, you can make sculptures, you can do all kinds of stuff in three D, and then if you wanna show off your work, put on the goggles, now you're in the room with the work. I mean, it's.
That's something that Red River Valley, uh, Red River Marksmen Center, uh, article, uh, putting a simulator, same, same as one that we have here, and allowing high school kids to go in there and practice in the winter time, prior to their season starting. And that's, that's a major reason, we had, you know, we had raised some funds, uh, to do it, and all, the coaches, we, we coach from, uh, not only the Clay Target League for the high school, but most of us continue on in summer with the 4H program. And so it was kind of a, a perfect marriage to have, uh, 4H and the Clay Target Team from Devil's Lake, uh, go in, uh, together on something. And it really worked good when, uh, when the lift was worked in, and then we could get down there in the summer, cause we, Ramsey County has always sent a, a, or qualified to send a team down to nationals, uh, for 4H shotgun program, and it's a good way to get those kids, um, used to pick up their gun in the winter time. Generally, those kids have to qualify for nationals, they practice up until the snow flies, and then they do a, they even do a winter league down in, in Bismarck, as long as there's not a too much snow, last year when we went, uh, there was too much snow, so we didn't do the, the chilly willy is what they call their league down there, it goes from January to, through, uh, into February. But this year they did, they didn't have the snow down there, so the, the kids are going down every Sunday and competing in a league down there.
Well dedicated.
Yeah, it, it is, so. But it's, again, it's, uh, very worthwhile and a lot of fun, and, and, uh, we enjoy it, so. I appreciate you guys allowing us to do that.
You need to take a vote, Kelly?
Yeah.
Your motion in the second.
There's a motion in the second on the floor, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, both by saying aye.
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 For the same time. Motion carries. Okay, visitors and delegations. Anybody wanna say anything, Paul?
We're not visitors anymore.
Okay. Portfolios, we'll start with Jeff today.
All right, um, I did talk to Bill from Extension, they're, they're busy with their horticultural stuff in the, their Spring Flame, I think they're calling it, their gardening seminars. Uh, he's doing pesticide training for all the applicators that need pesticide certification, uh, through the state, we're doing that. They did have their annual review for their office, uh, their regional or their district director was up and did that, I sat in on, on that, and, uh, goes well, you know, for, for both Phil and, and Brenda. So. And I think that the county associations have approved that, that new split, that sixty forty split, uh, with, uh, for the extension offices, and, uh, as an association, the, the counties have gone along with that, as long as they're not cutting any. I think there was a big uproar in some of the smaller counties that, you know, they were looking at cutting the extension services, and, and as long as they took that off the table, I think our county associations have gone along with that. I talked to Carrie, she remains busy, uh, talked to Steve, um, they're busy. Suzie and Paula continue to be doing great things with the chamber office and tourism, so, very appreciative of the work that they do there, and. And then, uh, as far as on the water side of things, we do have that, an advisory meeting that you have this, um, whether from Mr. Mertens or from the governor, pointing Mr. Mertens to that board, uh, April eighteenth will be the day of that meeting in Carrington. You know, it's always, it's gonna be a little different type of meeting this year without the, uh, the pumps and water not operating at the time of the meeting, so I'm not sure exactly what to expect, um, with this late spring, you know, we're still making ice out here instead of melting it, and, um, you know, last year I think the meeting was in May, and this year it's gonna be, you know, April, so. But the governor, Governor Burgum's taken a different step, um, Governor Doll Rimple, his staff, him and his staff, ran the meeting. It was Governor, Chair of the Meeting, Governor, uh, Staff, but Governor Burgum's kinda taken a step back, and he's allowed the State Water Commission to facilitate the meeting, chair the meeting, um, and he's got a different staff in there, you know, his staff at the governor's office has been going through some changes, and so the person that we dealt with last year isn't there this year, I'm not sure exactly who's, who their contact person is over there anymore, um, because they've, they've changed so, so frequently, but. But, uh, I represent the Devil's Lake Basin on that board, I'm not sure if the county wants to put a stance on it, on how the operation of the pumps should go again this year, um, run until they suck air, kind of thing, or, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm guessing that's kind of the, the stance of the state, is that, you know, they spent two hundred and fifty million dollars to to build these things up and install them for the, not only for the protection of the infrastructure around Devil's Lake, it quite a more additional ag land, but it's also for the benefit of downstream communities, um, to provide them the additional protection of a catastrophic overflow of the lake, so, um, not that we're worried about a major inflow this year, I think it's, uh, between a half a foot and a foot is what they're still looking at. But, it's something that, that's always on the back of everybody's mind, is that, you know, with another big storm or another big rainfall, we could be right back where we were back in twenty eleven. So, keep the pumps operating, we have, we're about, uh, three and a half feet before we hit the threshold on the east side, and we're, you know, four and a half feet down the west side, um, but I think as the lakes go down, that sulfate levels will dictate how often and frequently those pumps can operate. You know, seeing the east side as less, lesser quality of water, I'm guessing that they'll want to operate as to fold to capacity as they, they potentially could, um, so maybe we'll see a lot of them, uh, the west side operating. You know, and that's getting above two hundred and fifty cubic feet per second. So between the two, that's six hundred CFS, equates to about twelve hundred, uh, acre feet a day. But when you're looking at a half a foot increase on the, on the lake, that's seventy two thousand acre feet, that's about the capacity of what they actually do. So, um, people don't realize that it takes an awful lot of water for the lake to go up, and seventy thousand acre feet, that's a lot of water.
So a half foot rise without any evaporation, it's just sixty days of pumping.
Right. Yeah.
Takes two months to pump off a half foot without evaporating.
Yeah. So they generally get a foot, foot and a half, uh, off of the pumps, you know, last year they set a milestone with a million acre feet pumped, uh, removed since their inception in two thousand and five, so, that's a, that was a big milestone. Uh, if you think back to where we started in ninety-three at five hundred and seventy two thousand acre feet, that's almost twice as much as the lake cat in it at that time, that we removed, so, significant amount.
Amazing what it could be.
Yeah, it really is. That's all I have. Water tour, we'll be doing a water tour again on the twentieth of June, if anybody's interested.
Okay. Okay. Where?
Everything's pretty quiet except for the LAC, and we have pretty much discussed that. To the end of the discussion, it's been out in the public again, pretty good, so, uh, I think everybody knows we're making great progress. Like Jeff said, you know, we gotta give the heads up to those people out there that are, that have done great strides. Dan Craft is, is one that kinda got missed, but he's really straightened the jadle out for us. The system here will just be the cherry on top, other than that.
That's what I do.
Great. Yeah.
Of course, we talked about our social service, one thing I was gonna mention there. Rhonda, with her attended care program, is working very well, she shared that with me, and we started a number of years ago, and been used by other counties. I'm gonna thank you, an old lady from Trail County, I know an individual using that attended care, they were very appreciative of that program, very appreciative. Not costing the county a lot of money, but I think it's saving us money, that it sends you miles to Grand Forks. If you can add them in that program, it's working quite well. That's all I got.
Lucas?
Uh, as far as parts of the portfolio that are here in the courthouse, uh, everything seems to be working smoothly, as you'd expect, I think Lisa is very busy still, but everything seems to be going well, I haven't heard anything from Katie, but with reporter's office, no news, it's generally good news. As far as the rest of my portfolio, uh, the Lake Region Library is looking to reopen plans for the reading garden that I first told you about last year. Uh, we put those plans on hold, as you'll recall, when, when Angela, the outgoing director, announced that she would be leaving. Uh, but now that we have the new director, Jared, uh, he, he stayed in an interest in pursuing that, um, he had some, some ideas, and so we're gonna look at going back a little bit to the drawing board, uh, potentially changing the scale of the, the garden. Still be looking to, to raise the money for that, um, potentially as a community fundraiser, uh, so I'm excited about that. The Heritage Center. The Heritage Center, I wanted to bring up, we got an email, everyone on the board last night, showing significant water damage on the third floor from a leak in the roof. And I would expect that as we continue to melt off, we're gonna see a lot more. So I, I think at this point, we're, we're reaching very quickly the junction where if something's not done to that roof, you're gonna, you're gonna have some significant problems. Obviously you can't do much more until you have the full melt off, but I think that this coming year, we're going to need as an organization to find some money to, to fix that, or potentially we're gonna have extreme structural issues going forward. On a happier note, with respect to the Heritage Center, the annual gala is coming up, and I don't remember the dates, do you know, Paul?
Fourteenth, I believe.
Fourteenth. So if you don't have your tickets, please support a great institution and buy them, it's a fun little event, and this year it's masquerade. So my mom was down in New Orleans and brought me up a mask, so if you wanna see me looking goofy in a mask, you'll have that chance. Also wanted to, to bring up with respect to the Home Rule Committee, two of the commissioners I saw there and Candy was there as well, I guess Kevin was too, the Township Board. I got up and spoke probably too long about Home Rule and I would, I would say that it was a positive discussion. Maybe the reception was a little bit more mixed than that. There were a lot of questions and, and I had many people asking questions after the meeting as well. But I, I'm still, you know, very optimistic that, that the work that we're doing on that committee is, is good work and will be positive for the community. We have our next meeting tomorrow at one thirty here in the, in the court, in the courthouse in this room. And I'm hoping that we have the initial draft document finished by that point. If anyone that's here right now would like to sort of see some of the things that we've been working on and give your initial thoughts on, on the direction that we've gone with respect to the charter, you're in poverty greatly appreciated. I think that's it for me.
Okay. Uh, just from my perspective, I was just gonna echo the thoughts on the attendant care. I think, I think that's one of the, the things we're getting probably pretty good paid for our buck. It's what, thirty-six hundred bucks a year and rent is basically what it costs us and the rest is kinda run back through the state, so for thirty-six hundred bucks, we're getting a pretty good deal, I think. We're gonna be a lot. Steve and Jeff.
I'd just like to echo your advice, my social service, I'm not taking it over. Of course, it used to be under my care forever. They have taken it and they have melted it into something that is a valuable asset. Well, it's been a valuable asset, but it was hard to fund because of usage issues. Well, they have expanded that by using it for their, their care, their, you know, for their foster care, temporary foster care, they've also expanded it with the school system, I believe, for some of their.
Public school suspensions.
Their suspensions, that the kids are assigned to there. So I mean, they've done a fantastic job of utilizing something that we need to keep available and viable, and I'm glad to hear that it's being very successful because it is a much needed thing and kudos, because they're doing, they're doing very well with that, so.
Yeah, and our, yeah, we're, our director now, Penny, has been doing a great job, according to Rod, keeping staff and keeping things running.
Exactly. It's one of that quiet office, that.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's not, like you said, a lot of it's keeping the place busy, while with the additional workload that's put in there and keeping other counties.
Exactly what was needed.
Yeah, it's actually.
And expanding the other counties, because the other counties are in the same struggle as us with two miles. We have no work done, so I mean, you know, that's fantastic.
Yep, and it's, it's, it's worked really well, so it's, it's a success story we have. Let's see here, everything in the courthouse has been pretty quiet. Nothing to worry about, any of my portfolios really, it's been pretty, working pretty well. For Devil's Lake, we haven't had a meeting since I last visited with you, so I've got no update there. The County Housing Authority, we had our annual meeting, which is always just in conjunction with our meeting in March. March, yeah, lose the track here, but. We've got our audit back, the audit came back fairly decent. We have a few things we gotta clean up there, but overall, everything's running pretty well. Vacancy rates have been down, which is nice. We'll keep the place, all of the facilities whole and that's, that's a good thing. I was able to attend, I don't even know what the technical title of it was, but the Association of Counties as part of, it was passed and sent to recor, and as a part of a bill in the last legislative session, to have basically a group of, it was sheriffs, states attorneys, county commissioners, some social service directors, public health, talking about recidivism rates at jails, trying to decrease recidivism rates, things about what, what can we do to prevent incarceration as well as transition people that have gone through incarceration back out. Was able to attend that down in Bismarck, it was a pretty good meeting, some good information there, talking about, about those things, what other counties are doing. It sounds to me as though the other counties were kind of, jealous probably isn't the word, but that we have a reentry center that works and, and we're kind of ahead of the eight ball by having that reentry center, because a lot of counties would really like to have those options to be able to transition back out. Doesn't mean we can't do more, but we, we have a pretty good head start comparatively to a lot of communities. Talked a lot about through the Free Throw Recovery Program and how that's kinda starting and, and it's, it's slowly going here now. I think we've got four or five referrals at this point, so we're, we're trying to get that up and running and it's been a lot of work from the, the different entities that have been involved in the community, but it's, it's a valuable mission and I think we're, we're making some progress there. See, other than that, I don't think I have much more.
I would like to let everybody know about the planning commission, the comprehensive plan. We had a public hearing back in January on that and met with Joel Quanbeck from KLG along with Beth Black. And we kinda cleaned up some language in there, that we had some areas that were contradictory to one another within the plan, so we kinda cleaned that up a little bit. And then we went through the zoning regulations that, that Joel's gonna propose. I did get some medical marijuana zoning information from Carrie from other counties that she had gathered for us. It does look like we'll probably be right in the heart of a dispensary somewhere within, whether it's in Ramsey County or the city of Devil's Lake, I'm not sure, but we are one of the areas that is being designated as one of the dispensary units, so we wanted to make sure that that's incorporated into our zoning. We are looking at possibility of having a reconvening, the public hearing for the zoning regulations on the tenth of December today. If Joel can get everything good and if there's a room available. We wanted to get, get the things moving ahead before our producers get in the field, because I know it's gonna be going very guns once that opportunity arises. And so we wanted to make sure that people, not only on the committee, but the members of the public can attend and take a listen to those zoning requirements or zoning regulations that are entitled into our comprehensive plan that we, we approve. So we, we are going forward with that and hopefully, if everything works out, I'll need to work with Candy's office to make sure that the tent is available somewhere in the building for reconvene that public hearing. What we did at the end of our last public hearing is we moved table to zoning, so we don't have to re-advertise that we're gonna have a public hearing. We'll just let the public know that we'll reconvene, we don't have to publish it in the paper for two consecutive weeks and most of the requirements, so. That was one of the things that was recommended that we do, because it got late in the evening by the time we got our comprehensive plan all ironed out last time around, so.
I think we're probably what, two and a half hours deep by that point.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was a long evening.
It was a good discussion, though.
And, and people were, and get a little tired, get a little cranky, so, but it all worked out. Paula, Susie, you guys have anything for the board as far as your committees are concerned or tourism?
Do you guys want a lake access update?
Yeah.
We had a meeting here early last week and we received, I just, I just know it's in here. We got a grant from Game and Fish to update the grinder out at Six Mile Bay. We're getting a new grinder and table out at that location. They gave us a grant last year for Lakewood, so that one was updated last year. So the only one that won't be, excuse me, updated is Hennecker Landing and we're gonna look to see if we can maybe do a grant for that one next year. So basically we just have to coshere, taking all the old one and putting in the new one, so it's, it's been a, a great asset for Lake Access that Game and Fish came in and did that. They are also looking at reevaluating their structure for their, excuse me, for their fish cleaning stations. Right now they pay every station the same across the board around the state, with the exception for the year round, because there's two in there and that one runs year round. So this year they gave us an additional, I think it was like sixty-four hundred dollars for all of our fish cleaning stations, because we have to provide a report every year. So they are gonna take this year and reevaluate all of them and maybe look at how much usage they get and how many fixes that have to be done at each location, so we may be receiving more money. Not sure about Pelican Landing yet, we haven't been in communication with Game and Fish on that, but if lake levels continue to look as they are for the springtime, we probably won't be opening that location. It was on the bid as a secondary option in case we do open it, but at this point, we're pretty much telling everybody the closest ramp will be at Ground Island State Park, so just so you guys know that. I know it's not in Ramsey County, but in case any questions are asked, we do maintain that one with our contract with Game and Fish. And then bids were awarded last week for summer and year round and the septic systems. We did receive two bids this year for summer access and then one for the year round, but both were awarded to Joe Mertens again this year, so he will be maintaining those. Up at Channel Eight, it was fixed this past fall because they had landslide basically last year with all the snow and took out the, the ramp weight. So they fixed that and put in a garb rail to hopefully keep some of that snow back. But the city, just for reference, the city will be responsible for taking in and out the three shore fishing piers and then Lake Access will take care of the rest in case any questions come to you guys as far as the maintenance of those go.
We'll be doing a joint meeting, the Chamber, the Retail Chamber and the Downtown Alliance tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. First time that we've done joint meetings, I'm really pleased about that and we'll be discussing possibly joining together the crazy days in the earth fest due to the downtown DOT grant construction work going forward. So we'll be doing that on Wednesday morning. Of course, and just all our events that are coming up this summer with our fishing tournament, Dells Run and all those activities, we're continuing to work on those. So just moving ahead with everything with the Chamber continues to work on, working on with the boys here on the, the Home Rule meeting with that and hopefully coming to a conclusion on, with that on Wednesday. So just doing our jobs, but that's, and then we have our tourism, the North Dakota Tourism in April, the conference in Fargo, the sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth, so, yeah. So just some things that we got. Any questions for us on anything that you guys question about what we do or where we're moving forward with or anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rodney, do you have something?
Yes, I would like to have them work on something to get some lake access in, for this winter fishing. They're trampling all over on where they shouldn't be.
Right now we have about sixty-five hundred dollars sitting in our winter lake access fund, so with that, we are pretty much just approving the, the ramps, so East Bay, Six Mile Bay, Lakewood, that sort of thing. We will open those up, but we don't have funding right now to do more than that, so. Any suggestions, you know, if there's any area we could look to, to get funding, we're, we're open to that. We did apply at the Outdoor Heritage Fund here a few years ago and were denied, just because it, it's not a long-term thing. You know, it's just, basically they looked at it as seasonal opportunities for, for anglers and, and decided that that wasn't worth their, their funding. So we're, we're continuing to look there, or in different areas for funding, but like I said, right now we don't have a stable source for the, for the income to come in to, to do that, so I, I understand where you're coming from on that, but.
Heard, bring up one point there, it's quickly, one individual told me, I don't know how many vehicles have went in that entrance, it's not an entrance, they used this property to get on the lake. I would venture a guess there were probably ten thousand vehicles went on there, but I think we probably all know where they're going. And he asked me what to do and I said, put up a fence.
Is that what's rotten?
You got her.
Okay, all right, guys, why is the same thing?
Yeah, they're all vehicles that can help, they can't put on.
They put up a, you know, no trespassing, this will.
They drive right past, only, you know, they.
They can't reach.
They can't reach, whatever, they.
When we built that, I don't know, commissioned when we did that, went over there across the lake, I had Steinwand sitting right where you're at, Steve, and I asked him, I said, you guys wanna put some money in there, put some access points to the lake, to the ice? You know, put some areas for the people that wanna come up and fish from the shore in this frame of the earth. Oh, we don't have any money for that. I guess you were there, Mark. I still remember saying that, we don't have any money for that. I mean, like, that wasn't a very good answer, I didn't feel.
We're gonna have several, we're gonna have several issues coming up here in the next few weeks, because as it thaws, of course, that's when it gets the worst. And right now our lips frozen, so it doesn't hurt so bad, but don't, but.
Well, they attract a lot of dirt down that.
They will, but they'll also start rutting up really good when it starts to get thawed out. And that spot over by.
Colony four?
East of there, east of Woods Rutten, Denver, is another hotspot for us that we use all the time. They just pick a spot they think they've got it away to go and then they don't care who's, what it is. And we can't really do anything unless we catch them on there and we can't sit there and wait for them to come on up. So the advice is put up a fence, put up a gate, put up a, but we've also had people drive through gates, throw signs in the lake, so. I mean, so it's, it's an ongoing battle until, it just depends on where the fish are by, is where they go.
Well, yeah, all, all the access points are basically on the west part of the lake from Devil's Lake, there's no access on the east side of the lake, so if you, if the fish are by, know where their guys are gonna fly, they're gonna get on.
They, they wanna get on and it's, you know, it's a, it's a, what do you do?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of.
Game and Fish is more gonna look at putting in a landing over there, we talked about that, you know, we put one to east Devil's Lake, you know, somewhere out there that's so we have public.
Does, does Game and Fish have like a standing fund for if a local entity wants to coshere with them to put in some kind of a, a landing or?
I just said, they don't.
I'm saying, maybe they, maybe they.
Commissioner or the rector said.
As far as I know, they're looking at, as far as like a full ramp or a landing that way, they have been exploring options for landowners to lease, but they haven't been able to find a landowner in certain locations.
Works a little winter access as well, it's a little.
Yeah, and they work both ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if they got a big enough checkbook, they could buy this spot out here on the rotten road.
Well, that's, nobody has the checkbook, guys.
But I mean, as far as, as far as landowners, I mean, could you put up a trail camera, right, because then it's motion sensitive.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, chase yourself there.
Catch a license plate, but then we have to have a little law that says we have to verify who's driving. If I can't prove it's you driving and it's your car, I can't cite you because it's not me, I'm like, I don't who had my car that day. It's, it's just, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a chart, you know, it's a, it's just the, the, the form we face, I mean, it's just the way it is.
They call barbed wire, that does it.
Yeah, yeah.
People don't like barbed wire.
I mean, we've had where they put hay bales on the road and to block the road and the guys push the hay bales in the, in the ditch and let them on fire, just because, you know, and this gets, this gets rather intense sometimes, I mean, we've. And this gets, this gets rather intense sometimes, I mean, we've been...
That's what he asked me, put up a road veils out there as well.
Down the physical...
Big one, fire it.
We've had physical fights out there over some of this stuff and, you know, it gets rather intense and it's not, it's just not right for, you know, for this access. And so we're gonna, next couple of weeks, we're gonna, as soon as the weather warms up, we'll be dealing with a lot more of that.
Sounds to me like we have to figure out some kind of long-term east side access point. I don't know how we get there, but...
There's got to be something done pretty soon. I mean, because I've seen thirty cars go by my place in the morning to fish. Sometimes there's nine on a mile.
Thirty is a light number, I think I was wondering, one day, and I think I called it forty.
Well, I'm just...
Fifty just parked on the ice going, they parked because they couldn't get... So I mean, it's big.
Law enforcement can't keep up to this, I mean, you can't, you don't have the staff to do that. I mean, we need to come up with a solution that has some access for the ice or...
Well, the only thing I'm saying is maybe the county as a local entity could work with Lake Access and maybe we could put some type of idea together to go to the Heritage Fund, you know, and put in that long-term access point.
That's a good idea.
I mean, I don't know how we go about doing it, but at least start the discussion so maybe we can come up with something for the next cycle.
Then the next cycle for Outer Heritage Fund is, was April 1st and then the next one, I believe, is November 1st.
Okay, so I mean, we'd have some time to maybe get something together. Remember, it's just for a long-term solution, maybe we could come up with a way to put some type of an access point on the east side of the lake. We're not gonna solve all the problems because there's still gonna be people that are gonna jump on wherever they can jump on, but if we can make a good access point, we can hopefully slow it down a little bit.
Yeah.
And that's, to me, I guess, when I look at it, it seems to be the most logical thing because, I mean, we've got good access Devil's Lake and west, but you go east of Devil's Lake, there's really pretty thin getting on.
Well, then you also have your problems at Dry Lake, Lake Alice, Irving. They're all, they're all part of it and it's not just east, it's, you know... We've had arguments with people from Dry Lake, you know, well, you can't get up, I mean, there's nowhere to go.
No, I know.
There's one place, one place.
Well, we have the closest section line that...
Exactly.
It's people hopping on there all the time.
Two of them, I think, they closed because of that.
I think, isn't he putting up a private ramp right there where they closed off that section line?
It's further down than that.
He's gonna put one in, I know, the other side had one.
I have, I got the federal, that's a...
And that's their, that's their private, you know, that's...
Church ten bucks vehicle, that one.
But it's not just on east Devil, I mean, this is a problem that's a whole...
Yeah, we could put in fifty access points, we're still gonna have people hopping on where they shouldn't be. I realize that, but, you know, if we can alleviate the problem, the best we can...
If you have a one, we're, this is what we're trying to...
Yeah. I just think it's worth a discussion, you know, hopefully.
I participate in that.
And all the discussion here, I came up with two other things that I was thinking about. One on the Home Rule, I was able to, I was invited to speak to the Rotary Club. I spoke to them and I was thinking, well, it pretty well, I don't know, prior to that, we'll do, I think that went okay. And the other thing I was thinking about, just in the Heritage Center, I was visiting with Doug Golding, was he yesterday or a couple of days ago? He's on the, and I'm sure he's been visiting with Kelly about it. He's on the, I don't know, the Historical Preservation Committee or whatever. He said that in the past, they had helped fund rough repairs on any historical building in downtown Devil's Lake. So maybe, and like I said, I'm sure he's been in contact with Kelly, but maybe we should start this issue like that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't take that as a given.
No, and I know he did talk about talking with her about some other stuff, but maybe he's not, maybe they would be somebody we could talk to about trying to write a grant or something through the historical preservation and maybe get that roof repaired. So...
Probably a forty to fifty thousand dollar project and I, yeah, I promise you, the Heritage Center's not, it's not right now.
Yeah, and he said they just had a grant for helping redo the BMW roof, the district's a grant. It was only, it's not a full ramp, but he said it was just gonna alleviate the cost of about fifty percent. So, I mean, it's better than nothing, at least maybe starting with...
What was that, the roof? We never did that.
Didn't you get, didn't you get something on that?
Just that's what's...
Beautiful.
Okay. It's wired around and now...
Honestly...
Well, didn't we talk, but we had, we had to do something with the flashing and then, and then the piping underneath, the main problem is the piping where the roof collection goes underneath is the piping needs to be refilled.
It's like, you thought it was like fifteen thousand or something?
Fifteen thousand dollars repair.
Fifty, one five.
Yeah, it was like fifteen thousand, just, but the problem we had was, remember, the flashing, they wouldn't guarantee it on the seal part of the job.
But we were gonna look for somebody local on that project, weren't we? Did we have somebody, another name?
That was tech, I believe, wasn't it?
Yeah, but then we thought, well, then a third of the winner isn't... Don't wanna talk about it anymore.
Well, you never made enough dirt, it's snowy or whatever.
Maybe you wanna talk to him now, Kevin? Makes sense.
Look, there's so many.
Maybe he wants to look at it.
At this point, there's nothing much...
Oh, it's too cold, yes, I mean, it shouldn't be, not too long, I would...
If there's any way we can try to alleviate as much water damage as we could, I mean, I don't know how we can go about doing it.
Well, and I mean, I think at this point, best thing that could happen is get a couple of people up there with some shovels and just try to clear off some of that collected snow. I mean, it sounds, it sounds like it's not a lot, I mean, it sounds like it doesn't do a lot and it probably doesn't, but the point is, is that, you know, if you've got water pouring in, it doesn't take a lot of that before you've got real bad problems. I mean, because she sent out pictures and I'd be happy to show them to you all, but I mean, you're talking, the plaster of the walls is starting to crack open and it's all stained and...
It hasn't had much water infiltration on water or sheet rock or any of those things.
I know we talked about it, but I don't, I don't think we ever got... You remember the...
Um, Lake Region...
Lake Region, wrong, yeah, Jeff Dodd. They did a nice work, they did.
Yeah.
Gotta reach out.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think, you know, that long-term, and granted, it's a Heritage Center court discussion, but I think we have to be involved with it, is, we're kind of at that point, at that point, no return, but the building needs repairs. We've gotta figure out a way to do it, whether it's through grants and maybe some type of a local match or something, we've gotta start the discussion because there's gonna become a point where we don't do it, it's gonna just cost a lot more.
You know, we don't have to fall in because of the roof, in the rear bearing, no.
I mean, like you said, the roof, the steps, I mean, there's a lot of things that need to be done.
And as it stands right now, we're basically just holding on, you know, as far as, as far as meeting obligations. It's not, you know, we've had discussions at length about how to alleviate some of the budget concerns in a broader sense with respect to the Heritage Center, but as of yet, I mean, I don't know that we found a silver bullet, maybe there isn't one, but we just, we just don't have the firepower right now to do these necessary repairs and the longer we put them off, the more expensive they're gonna be. I mean, that's true with anything, so...
But I would just hate to see the building just go to waste.
Kevin, you didn't get all that docked?
I don't know. It may be a while before you can get up there, but yeah.
He's a good guy.
Come up with some options.
Some of that, you know, that where it's leaking is just a three-inch sewer pipe that cracked from freezing or whatever and that's where it's leaking, so...
It is not too bad a fix.
Is it, the old steel cast there?
It looks like it's a sewer line, like a plastic...
PVC, correct?
I enjoy it, yeah.
I'll go and fix it.
Will you guarantee your work?
I know, a little, not that... I haven't had weeks in my house yet and I go on my balance, bring in my hands. Okay, anything else?
Do everything else.
What?
I approve your approval.
Approval of a German? We have a second, we are a German.